Okay, good evening, everybody. It's September 12th, Tuesday. We're opening up our community of the home meeting. Just called it to order at six o'clock PM and agenda is adopted as scheduled circulated. Before we start, I'd like to introduce to you our guest this evening, Dave Wardrop. He'll be starting with us as our CIO on Monday. He's here for today's discussion on, I believe it's the LID that we're having to do. So he has some input into it. And I guess we'll start off with six o'clock with the Red River Planning District. Jennifer, Ryan, and Trevor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Evening, Council. Thank you for having us this evening. Wanted to take an opportunity to talk about a few things. As you know, I'm Jennifer Ferguson with the Red River Planning District. I've been with the organization eighteen years, ten of those as executive director. And we have Ryan Nickel with us, who is manager of development services. Ryan, I think you said nineteen years with the organization. And we also have Trevor Evans, our bio enforcement officer. Trevor is new as an RRPD employee as of January, but has been with us as a contract employee through Prairie Bylaw in the past for several years. So he was able to hit the ground running this year with us. Laney, if you could hit the next slide. What we wanted to talk about today is our development services department provides you an overview of that department, some permit statistics from 2022, and some of the statistics that we're seeing today, as well as Bill thirty-eight legislation that is coming into effect this October. Then we'll talk about enforcement, our legislative authority as a planning district, the processes and the actions to remediate, and then some opportunity for questions. So with that, Laney, the next one. So I'm going to pass it on to Ryan to talk about development services, give you an overview of what we do and why we do it, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So for development services, it's a legal requirement that the municipalities issue permits, review them and issue them. So as a member of the Red River Planning District, we take on the enforcement of the zoning and building bylaws for the RMLA St. Paul. So to ensure buildings are all designed and constructed properly, we're looking through building code requirements, plumbing code requirements, zoning bylaws and building bylaws. So we have to do zoning requirements and building codes. So our staff are trained in multiple different things to be able to enforce those different codes and bylaws. We need to ensure compliance with all those. So sending staff away to different training sessions. We do, because we do have planning staff on in our office as well. So we have community planners and planning assistants that assist with some of the zoning requirements. So sending staff for training for different things. It's, there's quite a bit of training that has to happen to cover all those requirements that are set up.
Laney, if you could hit the next slide, please.
So a bit of a structures and operations. There's the RRPD board, Jennifer, who is our executive director. And then it's broken down into the different areas. So development services is the area that I'm in charge of. So we have, in that area, we have development officers. So basically, a development officer is what most people would consider a building inspector. Bit of a difference between building inspector and development officer. Development officer can, is trained in both zoning and building code. Building inspector typically would just do building inspections for building code. We have development technicians that work in our office that are doing a wide range of duties, that everything from booking inspections to doing plan reviews, to updating and making sure maintaining our cloud permit program. And then we also have some contract staff that we bring in. So some of those contract staff are, some are students that we get through Red River College. And then we have other contract staff that help out sometimes with larger projects. Or if we get into a complex building, we ask them to come in just to help out with some of the other experience they have to assist us with those.
Laney, next slide.
How many staff do you have in your development services?
Um, right now, there's eighteen total. So here's some stats that we have. Basically, these are permits issued. And there's columns both for 2021 and 2022. So you can see the differences in those. It, there's a variance, it goes up and down. So in 2022, we dropped down for additions quite a bit. But then there's increases in other types of permits. So it fluctuates back and forth quite a bit depending on a lot of factors, really. You know, new houses, it's dependent on what lots are available for subdivision. Where people want to build, what conditions are on those lots. Because if you get a subdivision in a rural area, a lot of times there's no condition you have to build on within so many years. So then someone will buy it, not plan to build for five years. Another area, it's subdivided and they have to build within so many years. So then you get a lot more houses coming. And you've seen trending in different things with COVID. There was a lot more basement developments and backyard work with COVID because people are home and they're trying to do things. But there's still, you know, increase this year on some of those items, too. So right now, you know, there's been increase with multi-family because of just types of subdivisions that went in. And, and single-family dwellings have changed, you know. And then we have some of our commercial permits, too. So with the commercial permits, we'll get maybe as many as we did the year before, but just depends on the size of those commercial permits. It depend, that'll make a difference on how much income we get. So you might get ten commercial permits one year and ten the next year, but the dollar amount is a lot different because the size of the buildings and complexity of them has changed. So you still have to go, if you're doing an inspection on a 6,000 square foot commercial building or a 25,000 square foot building, you have to do the same amount of inspections. But bigger building might take a little bit longer to do, but you're still going out there for that many trips. But of course, the amount of money we get in for those permits for the $6,000 one is a lot less than the 25,000 square foot permit.
Laney, next slide.
So this is just to talk about inspections. You just kind of see the change with inspections. So in 2022, nearly 8,400 inspections were completed. So we're up by 22%. So all those inspections do include re-inspections and all the required inspections that are completed as listed in the condition of the billing permit. And if you look at when building permits are issued and when inspections increase, there, there's always a delay because by the time the permit gets issued, you have to go do inspections after. And then that permit's issued at a certain time of the year and the inspections continue for months after that while they're building. And then there's times when you do a foundation, you do damp roofing, they get out of the ground and then you don't go there for a while because they have to frame up the building, put windows in, put mechanical, electrical, and before we show up. So then you do maybe sometimes a bunch of, couple inspections right away and then you don't go back to that house for a while. And then all of a sudden, you're out there for framing, plumbing, insulation, vaporware, a lot of times pit and pipe. And so all of a sudden, you get a bunch of inspections right away again. So you can see that permits we issue now, we're going to be doing inspections on those for time to come. And then final inspections come up and those could be anywhere from six, eight months to two years later because depends on who built it. Builders that are doing it, they're calling us in sooner. Homeowners haven't finished their house yet. You know, it's safe enough for them to live in there, but they can't call for their final because they're not complete. So those ones can drag on as well.
Laney, please.
So these are permits issued from January to August. And you can see the comparison. So, you know, from last year to this year, you know, there is a change in those. Some of the subdivisions that were approved, they're filling up. There's less lots to build on. And, you know, with the current interest rates, you know, it's affecting, you know, some of the building right now. But there is still quite a bit of building and lots of permits going out.
It, it's interesting. So last, last year, we saw a marginal increase in commercial builds. It was around seven percent at the year end. This year, we're seeing an increase in commercial building of about 48% compared to last year. Again, the valuation of those permits isn't what you might expect. Some of them are smaller builds or less complex buildings. But we did see a decline in residential buildings of about 50% compared to last year, year to date. Laney, next slide, please.
Okay, so on this slide, on the left side of it, you can see, this is what's posted on our website. So it talks about permit processing. It's our dashboard we throw on our website. It's on the banner at the top. So we update this weekly. Just letting people know, at this point in time, this is where we're sitting for reviews. So it's how long it's taking us, once you apply, to look at it and either provide a list of items that are missing or if everything's there to, you know, process the permit. So those are review times. We can only base estimated times on review times because sometimes we'll say, okay, there's four things that need to be done. And we've had people say, well, I'm going to be on holidays for the next two weeks. So I'll get back to you in a month because, you know, I'm doing my basement, but I'm not doing it for a while. So then it sits there. We can't do any more work on it because we're waiting for a response from them. Or sometimes engineers are busy or, you know, builders are just waiting. They want to do another project, so they're going to focus on that one before this one. So our review times are always based on how much time we, it takes us to do our part once it's sent to us. The reason for that as well is because Bill thirty-eight is coming into effect and that is how the time is regulated under that bill. So we are aware of this in the past. We started implementing that as part of our tracking mechanism because we knew that that's how the bill was going to regulate times. So we started doing this a while ago, knowing that was coming into effect. So that's why our times are based on that.
Effective October of this year, the permit processing timeline for a single-family dwelling is going to be 25 business days. Our target is 20 business days. As you can see, we're well under that now, which is great. But effective October 2025, that gets cut down to 10 business days. So that's right, right about where we are right now. We want to make sure that we're delivering well under the 10 business days because we understand there could be national applications or penalties if those timelines aren't met for the upcoming year. And that can be challenged through an adjudication report.
How many inspectors do you have, Ryan?
We have five, three, not five, three, seven.
Something that's not shown here is our inspection turnaround time, which is 24 hours, which is something we're very proud of, 24-hour notice to, to complete an inspection. As you saw, the numbers were quite high. We did 8,400 inspections last year. We're seeing an increase this year. As Ryan said, sometimes there's a lag with respect to the permits. So some of our inspectors are doing over 300 inspections and of course, traveling a large geographic area as well. I mean, a lot of it is concentrated in itself. But our inspectors are doing a tremendous amount of work and we're still able to ensure that.
On the, with the bill thirty-eight implications and the quicker turnaround times, are you going to be required to do staff augmentation or increase staff?
We should. We will try to get ahead of that and be proactive. We saw that coming forward in 2021, 2022. We saw the large increase in permit applications coming forward, which is righted down. But we wanted to get well ahead of the curve, knowing that this is.
Yeah, so I guess the next thing, just some items and things that our office are doing. On doing, we're having stakeholder engagements. So Jennifer and I, we, a lot of times together with different builders, home builders, developers, that type of thing, just to discuss projects they have, projects they're going to be doing. I have meetings, site meetings with some of them just to go over some, some issues or struggles they're having on site, just to kind of help them find a solution to move forward with it. I sit on the Mattel Home Builders Association Technical Review Committee. I was asked to sit on that committee. So I can do that now, which is a great resource because we have people from places in the province that are there. A lot of the big home builders are there. So we discuss things as a group and try to be consistent between, you know, the city Winnipeg and surrounding area as well. Try to get some consistencies on interpretations of the requirements. Yeah, there is some struggles with that because the city Winnipeg's requirements and bylaws are different than the rural areas. But we try to work as much as we can with the building codes because the building code is the same throughout both. So we do have, try to harmonize that a little bit. Yeah, as I said, we have, we've had open houses at our office this year. We attended open houses set up by the municipality. Had booths set up there to try to be open to the public and let them, they go easier to approach. And continues cloud proving improvements. So with cloud permit, that's where everything, you apply for your permit. You can get your permit online. So once we finish our review, you can sit down at your computer. You make your payment, final payment, and the permit's issued. So we can finish the review, have a ready and R and say, two o'clock in the afternoon. You can sit down on your couch, have your laptop, 10 o'clock at night, make the payment and you can start working at 10:02 if you want. You don't have to wait for the office to pump to actually issue it. It's automatically issued once you make that payment, once we've signed off on it. So it's a great program and there's always improvements we're doing. We're getting feedback from owners, rate payers, builders. Our staff saying, hey, we hear this, that there's a struggle over it. We'd like to improve on this and we're working on that. And one of our staff does a lot of time to help keep those improvements going and make the program as best as we can. And just building relationships with trades in the industry. We're trying to spend more time, you know, meeting with builders, building suppliers, just to talk about what's required. And a lot of times, we're, we are a code expert. We've taken courses in code. So a lot of these other builders and stuff don't have someone that's trained like we are. So we're there as a resource as well to provide code information, code references, that type of thing. And working with the province, living closely, we've been trying to keep that consistency with that so that when they go somewhere else, we can have information still accurate and they can still use it. So a big struggle probably this last year, common issues. There's been a lot of re-inspections over the last year. A lot of that has to do in part with the fast growth that happened with the builders. Talking to them, they agree that they hired contractors that they maybe didn't do as much background research on or just maybe they were spent more time, but they had different trades coming in. Their site foremen's were having to do more, had to look after more sites than they did before, probably double the sites they had. So a lot of the site foremen's were relying on us to do inspections. They maybe didn't even go to a site before we came, which normally they would go through and just call us up. Of course, they didn't do a bigger list because they didn't get to check those things. And then that's where the re-inspects are coming. So that is getting better because now things slowing down a bit. Some of the builders are using their regular trades they always had. Your site foremen's are able to get open more often and check on things before we come to make sure they're actually done on the way they're supposed to. So it's starting to get better, but that was a big thing over the last year. A lot of time was taken on that. Re-submissions, there's been a lot of changes, more changes now than before. So if someone starts building and they want to make a bigger change to that building that they're building up, they have to go through plans of resubmission. So they have to supply some new drawings. We have to review that, make sure it works and issue that so we can go over the inspections. So it seems, I don't know if it's, why that is. I don't know if the builders were just saying, let's get this permit. There's changes coming later, but we want the permit now and get started to do those changes after. That seems to be some of what's happened. And that's probably just us, the things that we're doing, trying to get in the ground with it.
Past applications, too, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So, and then a couple of other items were fire separations in multi-unit residential. So there was a lot of, in West St. Paul specifically, putting in the multi-family lots, the duplexes. There hasn't been a lot of that this year. So a lot of the builders hadn't worked on duplexes. Or if they did, they were dealing with a different area and maybe that area didn't enforce certain things or look at certain items. So we did inspections on them and found that there was, you know, it took a lot of time because what they were doing, how their trades were installing it. For example, they were using staples to fasten the fire rated drywall in place. And they were supposed to use proper screws, have proper spacing. And they weren't using them. Missing drywall, spaces in the drywall, fire separations in duplexes. Very important thing because that's keeping one family safe from the other if there's a fire. So then with that spread, a lot of the fire department would come up and do their job and help try to contain that in that one unit.
Is there any requirement for sprinklers in multi-family?
Uh, there depends. So you can build a multi-family building without sprinklers, but you can only build so many units and then you have to put a firewall or separate it. And then you can keep going. So the building will look like one building, but the idea of the code is separating into smaller units so that you stop it from spreading. So if you get a large multi-family unit, a lot of times you'll see a firewall, which is a wall that extends past the roof. So you see that little parapet go up and over the roof that's there. So that's kind of like breaking the building up into two buildings. So you can build this one and that one identical. They can be touching, but they're considered two separate buildings. So you can build that same building without that wall and you'd have to put a sprinkler in. But then there's ways in the code that allow you not to put a sprinkler and if you need certain requirements, certain size, and that's what.
So our duplexes have to have firewall?
They have fire separations in their duplexes. So they just have to be fire rated between with, you know, the fire separation. And there's a sound requirement as well to help stop this.
And I know in June, Winnipeg instructions said that the province was adopting 2020 National Building Codes.
Yes.
So how is that affecting you?
Well, it's, it's a good thing because we're still running on the 2010 building code. The 15 came out and the province didn't, they chose not to adopt it at that time. They were going to adopt it this year and then through stakeholder meetings and stuff, they decided to move to the 2020. So it's a good thing because we need to catch up with the rest of Canada on building codes. But that will mean there's going to be extra training that's needed by our staff. Because when you jump from one code cycle to another and you missed one, there's a lot of changes that are happening. So our staff will have to, there's training that's available that we're going to be sending our staff to. But it's important that they go so that they are able to interpret, read and enforce that in code.
So the building code's been adopted by the province now already?
It's not in effect yet. It doesn't come into effect till the.
It doesn't come in effect, but they've adopted it.
They've adopted it, yeah.
Okay. So when does it come into effect?
So January, yeah.
January, okay. So anything that isn't final inspection will be, what, what do you do with that?
So we inspect buildings for the code cycle that they were issued for, the building permits issued for. So if you pulled your permit now, if you go up next February, you're still enforced to be asked for the code that's in effect right now.
Oh, okay. So anything starting in January will be?
Yeah.
Except for the 20 code, okay.
Yeah, so you don't have to worry if there's an increase in insulation. We're not going to go back to someone, oh, wow, you're still.
Code change, put some more insulation in there.
The only difference is sometimes, and it's not often, the code relaxes some requirements. So if that's the case, then we enforce that. So that means someone didn't have to do as much.
Okay.
Then we'd say, we're not going to make you do that when the next person building now isn't going to have to.
Okay.
If it is relaxed, we follow that. But if it's an increase, then we would enforce it.
Okay. The Minister of the Building Officials Association said, they have annual, like, annual seminars in the spring and fall, and the fall session is focused specifically on the 2020 code. So we're hoping to send out on the line to that service to talk to that. But that's later, we don't really have to.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question here? You said that the builders, I guess, are getting other trades coming in and they're not enforcing, I guess, the codes for the multi-family. Well, it's the same codes in the city of Winnipeg. So these builders would be going back and forth. So are they just getting unqualified?
In a lot of cases, yeah. One comment was that the person they hired just wasn't qualified to do the work. City Winnipeg doesn't conduct as many inspections as we do typically. So there's items that are being built, things that are being built in Winnipeg that no one's inspecting. And they really do come here to actually go inspect it, so.
Do you have, do you have an example?
Yeah.
Um, in the past, insulation, vaporware, foundations weren't being inspected in Winnipeg. You know, we're working on changing that. So I don't know if that's an effect just yet or not, but some of those items are being inspected.
As part of your service, have you explored video submission for inspection?
Yes, we did photographic evidence is what we called it for inspections.
Photographic, that's different though than video, right?
It is different. We found with video, the problem was sending a video and files usually got quite large. And people per day will send videos.
Okay.
So then you run into that. We still, through photographic evidence, if someone sent a small video, it could be sent in. We review that as well if that helped.
Okay.
We, we found with that, there was a lot of frustration from the applicant because they'd send in pictures, we review it and say, okay, we still need this, this and this because of pictures, to make sure. Even though we listed out what we need to be in the pictures. And then they'd have to go back again. And it felt like they were going over and over. Or in some cases, we can drive somewhere, do it, see everything we need and it's easier. So we still do for re-inspections. So for a whole, we were doing it for certain permits, like demo and other things, where it was just like, we're not going to go to the site at all. We're going to completely rely on pictures or videos. But it wasn't working the way we were hoping, but we still do for re-inspects. So if you're done in inspection and say, we had one where there's a cover plate for a cleanout in the basement floor. So you get a hole in the concrete like that, install a plate on it. They didn't have it, take a picture. So we'll accept pictures for re-inspects. This is a lot easier because it's very focused on one certain thing. And through cloud permit, we can put in pictures into our inspections with notes on them. So a lot of times we'll have the picture of one inspector who's out saying, this failed because you need X, Y, Z. They can take pretty much the same picture because they can see the one we took, take it from the same spot and show that what's up there. So it's a lot easier for people now because of that. And we use that quite a bit. And it saves us going on site.
Yeah, it does.
Making the trip.
Saves you time.
Yeah, it does save some time, yeah.
But we found that it didn't save time for some of the other permits. It was more back and forth and more frustration for the customer and for our staff that, you know, an hour inspection may have resolved something, but it took four hours of emails.
Yeah. So that's, we, we were using it for certain set inspections and trying it out. And then we, over time, we kind of fine tuned it to find the ones that were effective for both sides. And now we've kind of added on something that works, we feel works quite well.
Okay.
So the LID's common issue, I'd say, is water supply commercial buildings. I'm sure all of you have heard a comment about that or two.
Maybe.
Yeah. So with water supply, it's been in the code that it needs to be proven that there's adequate water supply for commercial buildings. When it comes down to that, the requirement for adequate water supply has to be determined by the fire department because they're the ones that are definitely showing up to put the fire. In the code, there's requirements that you have to have 30-minute hose ring minimum and you have to have so many gallons per minute. So it depends where the fire is, if there's hydrant near or not, where the fire department get that water. Now, in some cases, the fire department, they might not know what's inside that building or how much water they're going to need for in that building. That's where the designer then would have to provide calculations or can provide calculations to the fire department for that specific building and say, hey, this is what's in there, here's our fire load, do your calculation. And they can provide that to the fire department and they can look at it and say, yes, we have adequate water supply. So if the fire department have any questions for, about what's in there, what they need to provide for, they can ask the designer and the designer would have to do the calculations. The general contractor would have to hire someone to do that or if the designer can't do it, they provide that. With hydrants in place, if they're within so many meters of the building, there's requirements for it, that alleviates most of the problem because the fire department, your fire department can. The building code says it has to be within so many meters, but your fire department already said, we can go past that because of our equipment. Because you think about it, that requirement in the code currently is over 10 years old and it was in there before that. So a fire truck 30 years ago and a fire truck now is a lot different. A lot different, the equipment on there is a lot better. So they can pull water and push it a little further. So it's okay if the hydrant's a little further away. The fire department said, yeah, we're still good because we can get water. For the most case, fire departments, their trucks have enough to push water. Whatever quality, they just usually don't have enough water. So they can shuttle, but in the true shuttles, they run out. And we can't guarantee that 30 minutes of those. So at the end of the day, the code just says, we have to make sure as a planning board that there's, someone's confirmed there's adequate water supply. In the past, the designers and the code analysis on permanent application and on blueprints, there's a box they check off at, water supply. So we took that as, that was fine and it was good. Concerns came up from the fire department saying, hey, we're a little worried. There's a building that's a little bigger, there's more than where the case would be. So we started asking the designers, hey, did you check that off? What did you base that on? Calculations or talked to the fire department? And it came back that, well, we just assumed because multiple reasons, it felt there's a hydrant there or, you know, the fire department would be fine with it. So then that's when we started asking the question a little more over this last year and a half, two years. Making sure that your fire department has, is aware and they have the ability to follow the fires that you want to stay on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so to talk on that just quickly. So for anybody that's building, if they had to put in Sistrin or holding tanks, it's, you know, not just tens of thousands of dollars. It can be a hundred thousand dollar plus, basically, if they had to for, you know, 18,000 square foot plus building, right?
Yeah, it all depends what they have to put in for water supply. So, you know, that can be a discussion with the fire department to find out. If you're short water, how much water, you have to tune so big that tank is. And because we're in October, that tank has to be protected from freezing. So either inside a building or if they can't design it for underground insulated, so it doesn't freeze up. Yeah, it can be a big cost. So, you know, the best way is fire hydrants, that's your best bet because it's always there, it's maintained and the fire department knows. You see them, they know what to do with them and connects them, right? That's always the best case. Yeah, there is a cost if there is no hydrants.
Yeah, that was the big, one of the big stumbling blocks in Rossar for center work originally is because they were having to have people put in tanks or whatever.
Oh, okay.
Now they've all been able to remove them, so. Now they've all been able to remove them, so.
Oh, okay. I know, because they have hydrants. So it allows, you know, there's ways to design around it, but to design around it, when you split up a building, like I said before, into two buildings and then follow there are some requirements or the fire department will have enough water. But in some buildings, if you're building a very big square box, you can't split it up. Just that disrupts the flow of that building and the use of that building. You know, it's a long, narrow building that you can break it up into small ones. But that's not always the case if you have twenty, thirty thousand square foot buildings. You can't break it down like that, it just doesn't work. Yeah, yeah. So we've been working with the province on this, discussing with them about water supply and the requirements of it and responsibilities for designers and everybody involved on university, what part. Um, so just making sure that, you know, those things are in place. We're there to make sure that the boxes are checked by all the other people that are involved.
And that wraps up things from the development services. I'm not sure if there's any further questions for that, otherwise we can move on to the course of discussion if you like. So in terms of enforcement, always a hot topic for sure. Uh, I just wanted to go over some high level legislative requirements as well as our process. Let me have the next slide, please. So the legislative authority falls under the Planning Act for a planning district. So when it's established, the board's responsible for the adoption, administration, and enforcement of the development plan of the entire district and the administration enforcement of zoning bylaws and building bylaws and any secondary plans within the district. So when we are dealing with enforcement, it's largely limited to zoning issues. Yeah, please. So the Planning Act does give us authority to designate officers the right to inspect and enforce properties. We are required to provide reasonable notice when entering a property. Property owners can refuse entry, which may require a warrant for entry. Designated officers may issue orders to remedy contravention. And the act spells out what needs to be contained within that order. Um, so our process, we receive, I think, when we receive a complaint from the public or from the municipality, that's from the public, it does need to be through a forum. We undertake investigations. So our bylaw officer may go out to try and find the property, have a discussion with the property owner. We also work closely with your bylaw enforcement officer and administration team. And we may ask your bylaw enforcement officer to help us out if you have instructions in the area or to provide us pictures to, um, to complete the investigation. If we find that there is an infraction, we send out a request for compliance. And there is usually a fourteen day window for the property owner to respond. After no response, we move to the notice of violation stage, which again has a fourteen day window associated with that. Um, if we don't have any action or movement, then we move on to the order to remedy contravention. Typically, that's when we set out the notice specifically of what needs to be remediated on the property, what actions will be taken. And there's usually a thirty day window that goes along with that. Now, that is appealable to the planning district board. Um, so the board can, I think we'll talk about that a little bit later, but the board can vary, rescind, or appeal the order to remedy contravention based on their decision. We do require legal input, obviously, when we're looking at using property, entering property. We do look for legal inputs to make sure that we're following everything as we should. Um, there is also report to council or a resolution of council required to undertake the work. Um, very often remediation can be quite costly. So what we typically do is provide counsel with approach, what the remediation would be, understanding that we recover the costs. Um, you know, the community doesn't have the ability to recover costs, so no municipality has, municipalities have those requirements. Um, when we go to remediate the property, the order may refuse a century again and we may require on the order. But if that's not the case, we move forward on remediation. And we have seen some of that in the municipality of the last year or so. Uh, so the order to remedy contravention, as I stated, is, is outlined in the Planning Act. It may direct a person to stop doing stuff that might change or something that could be done. It needs to give specific direction on what needs to be remediated. And it must outline when the work has to be completed. Um, it also gives the individual the right to appeal, sent out under the Act of the Improvement Authority, which is the RFP board. So the board, as I mentioned, is required to make a decision or appeal that comes forward. They have to, in some cases. Um, and as it's something can decide to confirm the area or rescind the order. So we have seen a few orders go to the board for a decision. Um, and that does unfortunately sometimes delay the process.
Just going back to that previous slide, you have the reviews completed, administration provides a detailed report, and the order is permitted to appear as a delegation.
That's right.
Now, if there was, like, we had this, we had an issue here. Um, if other residents wanted to appear to speak on that, is it allowed?
So typically, that's not the case. It's just between the property owner and the board. It's not a public hearing like you see with the official use of rights.
Would they be able to, say, write an email though?
Um, perhaps that could be part of the information that the administration provides to the board.
Yeah, because sometimes people are affected by the, the issue.
Absolutely.
And they want to voice their opinion. So if the coast will board for, for appeal, they want to give the other side of the, you know, other side of the coin, so to speak. Yeah.
I got a question. So if it comes to appeal at the planning level, is that an in-camera discussion, the appeal with the board, or is it open to public?
It's open to public.
Just so that people could hear.
Mm-hmm.
Then it's not a surprise that it's come and gone and nothing has happened about it.
Right, yeah. Everybody listed on the agenda and you're a part of the meeting.
How many appeals have we had, have we ever been?
Um, I believe just two within my time there.
That's, that's very few.
Yes. Uh, so what we can enforce, again, under the Planning Act, it's largely limited to development plans, secondary plans, zoning bylaws, the available end of zoning bylaws. Um, next slide, what tools we have to enforce. So we can seek warrants to enter and inspect and remediate. We can remove materials related to contravention of zoning laws. We cannot evict people or prevent entry into the property. We can seek court orders. And the best tool that we have available specifically at West End Hall is the general enforcement bylaw that allows us to take action and for the municipality to recover costs. So that has been a very helpful tool in, in the order. Things that we cannot enforce, uncycled properties, noise, dirt, we have roads, weeds, drainage, neighbor disputes such as fences and trees and structures that are approaching onto other properties. So sometimes we do get complaints, of course, in relation to this, but we don't have the authority. Uh, those fall under municipal bylaws for the most part. Um, and that concludes things. I didn't want to get into specifics because we're open with respect to, to properties, but that's an overview of the enforcement process with the RFP. We are looking at, um, the potential for fines and working with our legal counsel to, um, to move that forward in terms of a process resolved by this direction under the board for last year.
I have a quick question for you. Uh, you showed a timeline, fourteen, fourteen, and then thirty, thirty days to appeal. Do you wait until after the thirty days before you do the remedy then?
Uh, the remedy is typically specified within that thirty day window. So the remedy would be on the thirty first, let's say.
Right. But you still have to wait those thirty days.
Yes, yeah.
So basically, it, it could be, it's two months before you can go in there and do anything.
Best case scenario, because there is legal input required, there is a resolution of council required, there is possibly warrants required. So there are a number of factors that could delay that. So that fourteen, fourteen, thirty is when the applicant or the property owner is required to respond. But there is other mitigating factors that could delay that, for sure.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Seasonality too, to have you play, uh, complete your case.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, well, I have a question for Trevor. Is he going to come up?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So my question for you, Trevor, I've seen your reports.
Yes.
How many times do you ask nicely and how many times before you go in and do something?
Nine out of ten, I'm asking nicely.
Yeah, I know, but how many times do we ask?
Uh, many times.
Yeah.
Well, we try and work with the property owner to get voluntary compliance rather than moving forward on, um-
Enforcement letters.
Enforcement, enforcement letters or orders for the contravention because the legalities associated with that, there are costs associated with that. And if we find we're getting some traction, we try and do voluntary compliance. If we see, okay, there's been some steps we can take here. Uh, I understand that with more of that, that creates some frustration, but sometimes-
Well, it's creates, it creates frustration at the municipal level because we're, we're trying to get something cleaned up and we've got pressure to clean it up. And so when, sometimes when you see that we're asking nicely many, many times, I'm thinking, well, it's, you know, it's time not to be nice anymore. Now it's time to, to move on it. So I was just wondering, Jennifer, then I'll, I'll point the question to you.
Sure.
Um, what's the timeline? Like, i- if, if Trevor's asking nicely-
Yeah.
Fourteen times in fourteen days or twenty-eight times in twenty-eight days, how many more times does he need to ask before? And, and Trevor, by the way, your reports are really good.
Mm-hmm.
Well done. Um, so I can see exactly what Trevor's doing.
For sure.
And it must be frustrating to go back to the same property over and over again every month.
For sure. So what we try and do is work closely with municipal administration to talk about what are the priorities, which ones do we need to focus our time and attention on? And obviously, we have one individual doing a lot of enforcement for public municipalities. So making sure that we're doing what we can then within reason and focusing strategically on the properties that are most threatened.
Okay. So it's going back to our CAO, is what you're saying? You're having a discussion with the CAO?
We're meeting, we're meeting monthly to talk about the priorities.
Okay.
Where things are, where we need to work things out. Is this, is this something we need to take action on right? Is this something that we can continue to force an action on that we have to make?
I think when people submit a complaint, they're expecting action immediately, right? They're expecting us to go on it right away, let's go, let's go, let's go. And when it drags out, I mean, I can give you some addresses where it's dragging out quite a bit. Um, we get a lot of complaints from residents. We get a lot of, um, it, it makes us look incompetent and it makes us look like we're not doing anything. And that is not the message that I want to get out there. Because we are, as a council and as councillors, trying very hard to clean up some of the yards. So if the direction needs to come from us to set their priorities, then at least we know as councillors to say to our CEO, we need this as a priority. And I know on, on one property that definitely happened, but there are a number of other properties that still need that. As you know, right? Yeah. So thank you for answering that.
Sure, yes.
Question, repeat offenders. You get stuff, you've worked all summer cleaning it up, by the fall, it's cleaned up. The next year, it's spring, it's starting all over again. And we all know what kind of properties we're talking about. Does this whole cycle have to start again?
Not necessarily. Uh, we work with legal counsel to refine the, uh, the orders to remedy contravention where we can go right to the order again and not have to start from, from first to the final in terms of violations. So we've, uh, we've worked with counsel.
And that, that needs to be spelled out at the first cleanup stage, you know, something. We, you know, we can come right back in here if it starts again.
Yeah, for sure.
Because we've, we've, we've all seen that. Where, you know, it starts to look like they're reorganizing, cleaning, following. And then all of a sudden, one winter goes by, the snow starts melting and you go, holy man, what happened over the winter? You know, it's, everything's back all over the place. Okay, well, it's good to know we don't have to start again.
Yeah, that is good.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. See, it wasn't so bad, Trevor.
Never said that. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so now we'll go down to, there's nothing at, uh, four point one, economic development, environmental community. There's nothing in four point three, infrastructure. Four point four is legislation. There's nothing, four point four one, we have a snow clearing policy. Federal owner has, and that is dealing with the, uh, snow clearing policy and their procedures. So I guess, uh, if you guys have got any comments on our snow clearing policy, it hasn't changed any?
So it, it's here because, was it the request of council?
Yes, it's just brought for information for council.
So through the mayor, so there is, there's no changes from previous, okay.
No.
That's, I was just going to ask if there was, if they could be outlined, so.
So the next thing that they came back with is what we were asking for was procedure? How do they implement the snow clearing policy?
They were asking for it?
We were asking for it.
Did we ask for it? I don't recall asking for it. Okay.
So I guess, um, I'll give it to you guys to see.
No, you don't need to read it to us, we've read it.
Yeah, no, do you have any opinions on it or?
I, I know that a couple of months ago, I was, I was bringing up the whole idea that there were certain hotspots, um, and some of the residential. I just, I just saw something here yesterday. Hold on, let me just see if I can find it again.
Yeah, there is nothing for residential here, other than do residential. That's kind of what the snow clearing policy says.
Okay, I had a question here. So on the snow clearing plan and procedure, one, two, three, on the fourth paragraph, so it says here, if need to come in early, contact all staff to come to work for five AM. Otherwise, start at regular time of seven AM. So are these, do these times coincide to the policy?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so what's the policy? Why, I thought I saw-
So eight AM.
Eight AM. And so if it's eight AM, how come it's not four AM for coming to work? Just-
Right, so we, we did keep the five AM call in.
Okay.
Uh, and as, as council knows, part of our, uh, change with our collective agreement this year was the change of our regular hours for public works. So traditionally, they started at eight AM in the morning, um, but they start at seven. So we haven't amended the policy. We felt that five AM was still the, the correct time to start snow removal in a major snow event.
The other thing is the paragraph right after that says, the public works manager inform and do an early check. What is, what's an early check? What does that mean?
That's a good question. That should, to me, should be spelled out.
What's an early check? Is an early check four in the morning? Is an early check, like, what's an early check?
Yeah, it can be, it can be the evening before or in the morning. It depends on the, the snow event circumstances. So there's a lot of variables in, in a snow event, in the weather and when it falls in the week and what's forecasted. So it's, it's hard to, you know, put every possible scenario into, into a procedure. Uh, I think what's really key for council to consider is, uh, when we have a snow event, are we meeting the expectations outlined in the policy? And, and we will, you know, review that as the winter season comes upon us. And if we need to revisit the policy or, or our process, you can bring that to our CAO.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, and that's the reason why this is here, because I did bring it up on observation of a major snow event. Uh, I'd like to definitely see something, I know that we can do better. And so I was bringing an example up. When, when we had a major snow event, what happened this year that I observed, and it happened the year before, um, is that basically after the snow event, there was all kinds of drifting by the tracks on, I know for sure on Miller and on Jackman. And it could be other streets as well. I'm not exactly sure if it's only the streets that are aligned that way. But it, it did happen and there was a huge, it caused huge problems for people going to work, especially Jackman. There's only one way in and one way out.
Right.
So there's no choice for people except to go through that drift. People got stuck, they were in the ditch. Um, and so, you know, on a major snow event, if it says five o'clock starting, uh, you know, it's not going to start at five o'clock if people are coming to work at five o'clock. I'm thinking, people should probably come to work sooner than that so that the snow clearing can commence at five o'clock. That's how I see it anyways. That's how I read it. Um, so I just see a bit of inconsistency with the policy and with the actual procedure. So I'd like to see some ideas, if some, some ideas come back in terms of solutions to address some of these known hotspots where it's drifting at the tracks. Uh, and it's probably has something to do with some science and, and the way the wind is blowing. It's always ha, it happens all the time. Um, and it, it could, like I said, be a li, it could be happening to the streets on Northumberland, Willis, Jackman, and Miller. Because they're just aligned a certain way versus streets like, um, uh, Grassmere.
Well, there's, there's, I, I know on my side of Grassmere, there is particular drifting in the same place all the time.
That's great.
So you know where the drifts are. It's, it's not rocket science. I hate to say that, but it, it isn't. Um, it's always front of my neighbor's house and it's always a big drift. And that's the way it is. And that's provincial, so we don't, we don't, the province doesn't come down there. We got to drive through the drift. That's just the way it is. But it's a busy street, so there's a lot of people driving over it to make it go. But I get your, I get your drift. But I get your, I get your drift. There's the pun. Uh, that there are certain streets that are lower. And so like on Grassmere, everything flows off normally. But, um, yeah, there's probably certain streets where it's lower and it's drifting more in those areas.
I, I can bring that feedback back to our public works.
Councilor Campbell?
Yeah, you know, we, we had this discussion before, you know, Legend, you know, I've, I've lived in a few different areas of the R M., so Legends is bad. There's only one way in, one way out. Last year, the school bus even got stuck, right? So it's, I think it's, it's hard, Mike, for the employees to, they can't be everywhere, right? So as much as, obviously, I would love my area to get cleaned, your area to get cleaned, you know, everybody in the audience's area to get cleaned, so they're not stuck. It's, it's tough. And the guys, they can only start so early, right? Just like you or I with our job. We, we maybe have different jobs than them, but they're not gonna start at midnight, right? Or you say, okay, you guys gotta start the night before.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a balancing act.
With continual clearance, you're always going to have a first and a last. Uh, so that's, that's part of a snow event. Uh, but we try to mitigate so that it's safe to commute and, and use our roads as, as best we can.
Yeah. But last year, there was one that was bad, you know, when the school bus got stuck, I went and got a loader from, you know, contractors that I know and I plowed the, plowed the street from Pipeline all the way to Oakley just because. So it's just, it's unfortunate, but it's, uh, with, with wide open houses here in the R M., we, we're gonna have that problem.
I think one of the things too that we discussed previously as well is if it starts snowing at noon, then Public Works should go at four o'clock and do a once-over. Clean up the first, see if there's, if it's, if it's heavy snow, clean it out there once and then come back and the next day and do it again. Because, you know, if you leave all of that snow until five o'clock in the morning, nobody's going anywhere.
That's true. I, I guess, like, when I was looking at this, there probably needs to be some more specifics in this procedure. It seems to be kind of vague. When I read it, you know, like, then I say, as a couple of examples, it says, uh, uh, snow event procedures will, will monitor, uh, snow event procedures will monitor upcoming snow events by checking weather radar. Well, how often are they checking weather radar? What time are they checking weather radar? Like those kind of specifics. Because like if, if, if they're ready to go home at four o'clock and, you know, we all check the weather. You know, we all know that, you know, the weather says that, you know, there's a storm coming up. It's, it's, we, we expect to get twelve inches of snow over the night, so we're all checking for that. So at, when they leave at four o'clock, you know, that might not have happened, but we know that it's coming, so maybe we should, someone should be checking periodically when it's coming.
As I said, each snow event is, is different. And I think that, um, council needs to trust that our staff will be checking and monitoring the weather conditions adequately. And I'll remind you that the policy is where you have influence. Are we meeting the policy requirements? And if we're not, you bring that to your C A O. And the C A O works with the department head to develop her procedure. That's operational.
That's true, which is why this is up here. So it's, so I guess the question is, is that, snow events, on a major snow event, it says that at five o'clock in the morning, they start plowing. But if you get four inches of snow between four o'clock and midnight, they're not gonna be plowing at five o'clock in the morning because there's no wording in here to suggest that. There's no follow-up on this. It, it seems to be that they're, they're, um, is, uh, the same old thing that we're gonna be dealing with is that monitor snow throughout the night. Well, okay, so how often, who's monitoring the snow throughout the night? When are they gonna stop monitoring it, it'll snow? Are they monitoring it every hour through the night? Or are they monitoring it every two hours or three hours or four hours? This just says that they're monitoring it to the night. It doesn't give any specifics. So, you know, someone might read this and says, well, I got up at midnight and I monitored it. Yep, there's nothing. Someone else might come along and say, well, I got up at two o'clock in the morning. I'm, I monitored it. I've got up at four o'clock in the morning. It's through the night. It really doesn't be specific. And, and I think during the daytime, I, I see that work covered because we know what's going on. It's what happens when the staff leaves to when the staff starts the next day. That's the dead period. And that's the thing that, that we don't know. You know, they say that, um, um, you know, public works manager informant do early checks. And this is what Councilor Patakan was saying. Well, what's early? Is it one o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning? Because if you're gonna phone somebody in and you do a, a check at four o'clock, are they gonna be there within an hour?
Generally, our staff would know the day before if they are planning to do an early start. A, a major snow event is not common, right?
No.
So the, these events, you, you do have some prediction that you're gonna need your staff in. It doesn't come as a surprise to anyone. So you're not finding out at two A M. that you've had a major snow event that you didn't know about at four P M. the night before. Okay? And again, if we are meeting the policy, you don't need to worry how often we're listening to the radio. If we meet the policy requirements, the procedure that we implement is not where council needs to focus. You focus on the policy and we make sure we operate it.
I disagree.
Noted.
Well, this is a policy that has been established. Operations needs to prove that they have a procedure in place to establish this policy. Right now, when I look at this policy, at this procedure, there is no procedure to prove that this policy is gonna be established. Because if you want someone there at five o'clock in the morning to start plowing, when are they gonna do it? If they do it at four, if, if you, if you say they're already doing it, then write it in the procedure that this is what they're doing. Because when I look at this thing, uh, we're gonna go through the same thing what we did last year and the year before that. This is that people are gonna be complaining, saying, hey, look at, uh, we didn't get plowed. This, there's no way of measuring if the policy is effective with this procedure. There are too many vague, vague, uh, vague things like who, who will be contacting staff? Is it, because this is overtime. Is the public works manager?
Right, well, I, I would say we're meeting the policy requirements because our policy in a major snow event, I believe, requires seventy-two hours and we clear within twenty-four.
Yes, okay, that's understandable, but they don't start at five o'clock in the morning.
But we're meeting the policy requirement.
Not starting at five o'clock in the morning, you're not meeting a policy requirement.
So are you saying, are you saying, Mayor, then, that we should change the, the snow clearing policy to be that they have to start at five o'clock in the morning at every storm event?
It's laid out in the policy when they start at five o'clock in the morning. It's a major storm event and minor storm events is when they start at five o'clock in the morning.
So any storm event?
Any storm event. That's what it says in the policy.
The other thing then is your number C should be changed to seven A M. I don't know if you wanna do a resolu, resolution to do that, but you, but if, if you have it in your procedures that because of collective agreement changed to seven A M. with their shifts, then your snow clearing operations should co, should, for routine maintenance should be at seven A M.
That's what the policy says. I don't know if that's, um, eight o'clock, uh, routine maintenance is all right if they start at seven. It's, it's a timeframe. For head, Councilor Bichetti?
What it sounded like is first, I think first of all, we should fill up the complement of people that we need in our public works department because I know we have, I think we have a couple that were, have left or, or not there and trying to fill everything.
We, we currently have one vacancy and we have one leave.
Okay, so that's two away if we're going into the next season. I don't wanna say the word yet because it's too early. But then we, we should have started looking at, in this policy, maybe splitting up the staff when we know there's gonna be a snow event and have a, you know, under half, whatever, a smaller staff running, say, from the four o'clock till whatever time.
Oh, you mean split shift?
Split, split the shifts, but right now, we're only running with four, three to five people. You need that to, to, to stay within our policy of seventy-two hours.
Well, we only have two snow clearing machines for the streets, right?
No.
No, we have like seven.
We got at least five running, five working everything that we need to do because you know, one of the sanding trucks we can't plow with right now.
And then we've got the sidewalks.
There's two graders.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about sidewalks.
Three loaders, at least one truck plow and one sander.
Okay.
So it, it's having, it, it's, it's, it's always changing as, as the acting C A O was saying here. It, it's changing and to say that the policy is not working, I think is wrong because I'm gonna say eighty percent of the time, people are bragging about the snow clearing that we have in West St. Paul. There is, as Councilor Patakan's saying, there is hotspots. You know, I, I've seen it all along Main Street, just the intersections pulling out onto Main Street. I've heard it from River's Edge because it's at the end of the municipality, it's always drifting. Jackman and, you know, the ones that Mike has been saying because it's drifting in the area. But it's changing all the time, so to, to, something to prove that, what time are they checking this? It's changing all the time, so.
And that's true. I agree with that.
This has gotta just be a live.
Well, no, but then that's what, they should be able to say that in here, that it is changing and this is what they're doing when it's changing. Like, uh, I, I guess, you know, they mentioned that snow clearing is finished within seventy-two hours, which is all right. I agree that they've done that. That's something that they can do. That's, that's marvelous that they do that. When it comes to, uh, the time that they have, they have overtime, so people can be working overtime to do some of this. It's up to them how they plan to start their people. The, the thing that they have to do is to make sure that when it says snow plowing starts at five o'clock in the morning, how do you get there that they start at five o'clock in the morning? Because this year leaves it open that, you know, you can wake up at four o'clock in the morning and you go, oh, yeah, okay, good. I need to get somebody in. So they get to work and they start at seven in the morning because that's when they're up. And we need to know beforehand. And there should be a cutoff time. I'm not saying that, you know what? You have a cutoff time that is generic and you say, okay, you know what? The cutoff time is ten o'clock. Let's say ten o'clock at night. So something happens. Now you got a cutoff time, you say, okay, this is what happened with this event. They started at ten o'clock. Maybe we need to change our procedure a bit so that we can still accommodate the five.
But Mayor, your, your policy states that any storm event or any major storm event starts at five A M. So the only thing that's starting later is routine maintenance.
That's right, but it's the five A M. that's not happening.
No, it is. It's in section one B. says, "Snow clearing operations for a major storm event or for a storm event shall commence at five A M."
That's right, but employees don't start at five A M. to do it.
I, I, I don't think you can, I, I don't think you can just give a blanket statement of that for every snow event. I, again, I, I think that we're, we're expanded what this conversation was meant to be. It's brought to you for information. And again, if, if we're not meeting the expectations set out in the policy, then we can address that.
Okay, but that's what we're seeing right now. There are points raised that this is not meeting the policy.
And I will bring those comments back to our public works.
Okay, so they're gonna change the procedure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just say some closing comments? Appreciate that this has been brought forward. I mean, generally, I'm very pleased with the R M. exceeding the expectations of the policy. And yes, storm events are not very often. And that's exactly why I'm bringing this up is because they aren't, they don't occur often. We gotta be, this policy has to be like top-notch so that it does address the, the issues that I'm talking about. Because when people are getting up in the morning, they gotta go to work, it's rush hour traffic, school buses are getting stuck, people are getting stuck. Something's wrong with our policy. It's gotta be so, it's gotta be so good that it does meet that issue where we can address these, um, hotspots, right? Where the snow is drifting. That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying, have a second look, look at that. How can we, how can we interface this po, this policy to solve this problem? Is all I'm saying. But yes, like, I mean, I came home, at the end of the day, streets were cleared, that was fantastic. It was phenomenal. It was great. It's just at the beginning, like, if we have a great policy, it's gotta, it's also gonna solve the problem if people wouldn't work in the morning. So.
Go ahead, Councilor Campbell.
Uh, yeah, Councilor Patakan, I can, you know, like I said, I can understand, uh, you know, your, your frustration. But the, the thing is, is with our limited staff and limited, uh, equipment, they can't get everywhere, right? So whether it's, like I said, someone on Bulldog that gets stuck or, or you or I, you know, there's, there's always gonna be someone that, um, we can't get, get everywhere, right? So that, that's, that's the problem, so.
I understand. I'm just saying, if, if the solution is to get more equipment or more staff, that's an option I wanna see on the table. That's all I'm saying, right?
Yeah, just, the R, the R M. covers how many square kilometers? Any, uh, acting C A O. off topic.
I apologize, I don't know our road kilometers off topic.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the number off topic.
I'm gonna put my two cents in, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor Campbell.
I think we should just let the policy, the, leave it the way that it is and let them clear. And if they're not, if, if we continue to find problems, we'll have to go back to the policy and do something.
I don't know if it's a policy we have to go back to, it's the procedures we have to go back to. Because the policy is fine. I have no issues with the policy.
Well, then we go back to our staff and say, how are you gonna meet the policy because you're not meeting it?
That's right.
I think they got the gist of it. We've said, we've said it in enough meetings, right?
But we, we've got this policy now that says five A M.
Yeah.
That's really our main concern. And, um, let's see how they do. And if they don't, if they're not doing their job, then we come back and we say, okay, we gotta address this again. Now, how are you gonna meet this because you're not meeting it? But we're assuming right away that they're not gonna meet it.
The wording indicates that there is no definite timelines to say that they will meet it because there's nothing in this procedure that indicates when is, when are they gonna call people? They just say, well, we're gonna call people. But there's gotta be a deadline because, you know, if you want someone to start at five o'clock in the morning, you're not gonna phone them at three o'clock. You should phone them the night before, like at ten o'clock. And you know what? You phone them in and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But at least you're there, that they're there, ready to start and they can clean up whatever it is to be cleaned up. When they talk about, uh, they're going around the municipality here, and I understand that. So they're doing an early morning check and I think Councilor, uh, Patakan said railroad tracks. That should be probably in one of these things here is that, where do you start? Like, it, they're not gonna clean the whole municipality. I understand that all at once. And if we have a, if we have a staff issue, then you know what? That's up to them to call contractors then. If we don't have staffing, then call a contractor. Arrange for the contractor.
Can we do that?
Well, why not?
Well, we have equipment rentals.
Yeah, I don't know why we can't do that.
We, we certainly can, but during a snow event, pretty much every contractor, you know, they're gonna, they have, they have contracts that they are getting paid for. Uh, so it would be something that we would have to have pre-negotiated that, you know, we're not, we're not at the end of their clearing, et cetera, right? So, and all these guys are getting money for these contracts, uh, already. So if they're, if we're at the back of the list, we're already gonna have the R M. cleaned by the time they're coming.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but at least that's an option to look at. We don't need, we don't have staff. We need, if their staff is not available, then contract.
So what you wanna see then is that if there's a snow event and the snow clearing has to be cleared at five, that they let the staff know by ten o'clock the night before?
Whatever time they feel reasonable, but they have no special time of.
Did the Ms. Shaw not say that they, if they see that there's a snow event coming, they will be determined the day before that they're coming in at the five o'clock?
But that doesn't say that in the procedure.
Right, that's why the procedure's an internal document, right? We don't, we don't, it, it's, it's not meant for council to be telling us how each step in the process works. When we do a deposit, you're not telling us to count the tunnies before the twenties. Operationally, it's the decision of the municipality staff. If we meet the policy, we're doing it well. If, if we have concerns, which you've raised, we bring them to Public Works. They have to make sure that that's taken care of.
Yeah.
And if we don't have the tools to make sure that's done, we bring that back to council and say, we need X, Y, and Z to make this work.
Yes.
Right, so I think what the mayor is trying to say, and I get what he's trying to say now, is we have it met the policy.
Yes, and if, if there's, if there's shortcomings in certain areas, we'll bring that back to, to Public Works and we'll make sure that the, the process is improved for this season.
Yeah, so I think we just need a tweak.
Yep.
And then let it, let it, we need to let them do their jobs and see what happens on the first snowfall. And if it's not gonna, if it's not working well, then we come back and say, okay, it's not working well. Something, something needs to change.
The policy talks about the completion.
Yeah.
And the policy, the R M. in actuality exceeds that.
Yes.
I'm talking about the beginning.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
That's what we're talking about. That's what I'm trying to talk about, so.
It's, it's, it's noted. Your concern is, is the morning traffic and I, I've heard that.
Okay. Councilor Bichetti?
So could we not add something? Because we have it in the agendas, the way the setting is. Could we not, through the winter season, have the public works manager or director of infrastructure in it? Every second committee of a whole meeting or every committee of a whole meeting? Is this working, is there an issue we have, something for us to discuss?
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's an ongoing, you know, collaboration between Public Works and council, so they can hear the issues that we're hearing, and where the problems are.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a great idea to have a, a snow event wrap-up summary, and, and have council's feedback, what went well, what we can improve on for next time.
Good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now we go down to, uh, four point.
Four point four two.
Right. Councilor Awarded Contract for Dutch Elm Disease.
Uh, this information is, is brought for your information, uh, this evening, we will have a resolution for Thursday. Historically, we partner with the RM of East St. Paul for our removal of Dutch Elm disease. So the province, uh, has downloaded this work to municipalities. The province inspects the trees in the summer, in the winter, the municipality is responsible for their removal. Uh, we found that, um, partnering gets us, uh, good pricing, uh, and as you can see, green drop is the, the lowest price, and we'll be recommending they be approved.
Just one quick question, yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor, have we utilized Green Drop Limited before in the past?
Yes.
With good.
Yes, and we've been very happy with their service.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Clyburn? There's quite a difference between these prices, eh?
Yes.
Is there a reason why there's such a difference, you know?
They want to make more money.
Or maybe we're getting less service?
No, we're very happy with the service, it's timely, uh, it's, it's always, well, well, we don't have any concerns raised from residents. Most of these Dutch Elm disease trees are removed from private properties, uh, so, you know, we're always careful when we have to enter onto private properties. We've, we don't have any complaints or concerns raised, uh, they, they've been a very good contract to, to work with.
Okay. Next is, uh, four point four three, the development infrastructure recommended on Miller Road.
Yes, so there is a, a newly announced program, um, from the province, called the Municipal Economic Development Infrastructure Program. So it's going to have been a little bit of history, uh, this is a new, new program for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Uh, there are some guidelines for what we can and cannot apply for. You are allowed to apply for, uh, as many projects as you like, you set, submit their priority to the municipality. And then the other unique, uh, thing about this grant is you also have to set your request for funding, whether that be ten percent, fifty percent, one hundred percent, and it's ranked, uh, their ranking approval process takes that into consideration. Uh, so we have, uh, in order of priority, our Miller Road pavement project, as well as the access center trails, which we would like to apply for. Applications must be submitted by October sixth.
And we put those in for a hundred percent of it, just it doesn't say, I'm guessing it's for a hundred.
If, if council wishes to give direction, I, administratively, we were going to go with fifty percent.
Councilor Clyburn?
Uh, what about, uh, so this is fairly new, I think we talked about this once before, um.
Yes, we talked about it in, in camera, uh, that we were getting these.
So, question for you, why would, like, I see we have these priorities. Why would we not include some future roads for next year too, because it's infrastructure, right?
If council wishes, we can certainly apply, uh, for, for other roads and prioritize them.
Because I know that we, we really need to do some paving in the, um, industrial park. And I've had lots of complaints about the industrial park and, and paving in there. And maybe, if we're applying anyways, why don't we put that as a priority? One of the priorities, maybe the third priority, but, you know, name some streets in the industrial park that, uh, like Ames Road. It's, it's partially, it's going to be partially paved, I see, I was driving by today. But then there's some.
The consideration of Ames Road is that it is a city of Winnipeg, uh, what road?
It's, Ames Road is completely city of Winnipeg?
That's correct.
Okay, but we have St. Paul, we have Merritt Crescent, those are all filled with, um, uh, businesses. And now we're starting to build out Second Street and Third Street, right? So, I mean, we could apply for those as well, I mean, I, I figure, might as apply for as much as we can.
Right, if you want to give some consideration, we can on Thursday add other priorities to, to apply, that'll be an easy, um, an easy alteration to the resolution.
Yeah, and I would say for Miller Road, we go higher on the ask, we go for sixty percent at least.
Council's direction, if you'd like us to do that.
Yep. Councilor Campbell?
Well, just to make sure, is Councilor Clyburn done?
Yep.
Okay, uh, just before I cut you off. So, uh, just on talking on, on this, but I wanted to bring up something else too, just so, like, because I had it in my notes, and I forgot what it, uh, made these notes. Have we applied for the Housing Accelerator Fund? Because I know the deadline has been extended, and it is right on, I think it's on CMHC's website. And it's, it's something that, uh, we could use for wastewater, and, uh, it's a, it's a fairly large grant that's out there right now. And almost every, and it's only for, uh, I think, capital region, I believe.
We'll look into that.
Okay. Uh, it, it does, it does, they extended the closing already once on it, so it does close soon, but I think it's a fairly, I looked at it, it's a fairly easy one to apply for.
Okay, thank you.
So that's, I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Councilor Shetty?
I just want to bring up, like, we're bringing up roads in the industrial park, but we have some projects going on right now, that are, well, that we're working on still with the sewer upgrades and stuff. You know, before we start adding the roads in the industrial park, because we, we just spent a big chunk rate there on the corner to add the light intersection and all that, I, I don't know then, why aren't we putting in Nye, Bulldog, Evelyn, Hiwatha, Minnehaha? Like, all those roads for rebuilding at fifty percent? It, it's just, how many? What I'm trying to say is, how many projects are we going to add before it starts to look like? Yeah, I know we can ask for as many as we want, but let's be realistic, this has got to go through the whole province. And, you know, if, if we put five or six or ten, it looks like we're just, you know, shooting for everything, I think if we show one or two, it shows high priority. And we have to pick and choose what we're going for, otherwise I want to see all those streets put on, to try and lower, you know, whatever we can do through that cost.
Yeah, but those streets are already paved, there's nothing paved in the industrial park, at all, nothing. And those would also come under the LID, because they would be remediated afterwards. So we could, we could apply for that fund later on too, my understanding, right? Because this is a new fund that will keep going, or is it a one-time fund?
Uh, I, I would have to reach out to Municipal Relations about the, the intake. I don't know if this is the single intake for twenty-three and twenty-four, or if there will be another opportunity.
One rule of thumb I've always learned, and that is, you ask. You always ask, even if, uh, if they say no, you still ask, because if you don't ask, you're not going to get anything.
Well, then we need to put those seven, six or seven streets on there, because that's a project we're going to be.
You can group the industrial park, and you can group that one too.
Um, I, yeah, I mean, I hear what, what, uh, my colleagues are saying, and I, I understand where you're coming from. But, um, a lot of, a lot of preamble work has already been done with Miller Road, we've, uh, we've got an engineering analysis. It's, it's shelf-ready, um, with a class, uh, I think class four, class three or four estimate. Whereas the other roads that we're talking about just now, um, there hasn't been an analysis. So I'm thinking maybe we can do that process, and then maybe, uh, bring it forward for the next round, but I, I think that's.
Well, I think the common complaint I hear from the industrial park, uh, is that they pay pretty high taxes, and they still don't have any, uh, asphalted roads. And that complaint has been going on for the last ten years. So, at one point or another, we're going to have to start working on the industrial park. So, uh, my, my feeling is, you know, this is a place that we're encouraging businesses to come in here, but we don't want asphalted roads. So, you know, we've got some new developments coming up, I bet you they're going to asphalt the roads over on Pipeline, they're inner roads. So why haven't, why hasn't it been done here? These people are paying their taxes, and they're paying pretty good taxes, and we still have an asphalt to some roads. It's not a lot, I don't think it would even be a lot of money.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Councilor Clyburn, I'm just saying, like, let's maybe talk about this in the capital budget discussions that's coming up in the fall, and then maybe bring it forward. Uh, I think that, uh, if we want to do it correctly, doing it the way we did with Miller, uh, doing an engineering analysis, getting technical feedback from our consultants in terms of what, uh, you know, the measurements of the street, and what kind of sub-base, and what kind of asphalt, class three, class two asphalt, that type of thing that was done for Miller, I think is extremely important, so that we get the best, so we have, so that it's shelf-ready when we're asking. So I, I agree with your comments, I'm just saying, let's maybe, uh, defer it to, uh, the capital budget discussions, which are coming up in the next couple of months.
Okay, so what study has been done on the access center trails? Have we done a study on that?
That's been worked on, that's been in the works for ten years.
That project is in the twenty twenty-three budget, and we do have an engineered, uh, drawing for those.
Do we have a, a study, as Mr. Barth can says, or Councilor Barth can says?
No, not, not for a trail, uh, generally, we do, we do have a pretty good, uh, estimate of what our trail, uh, construction will cost.
So we're not paving it, we're just putting down, two-quarter down?
Correct.
Okay, well, if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted, I've at least expressed it, I think it's important.
No, we're not voting, we're just having a discussion.
I think we kind of are, but that's okay.
Your, your comment isn't lost, it just, just.
We might not get an opportunity a second time out, that's what I'm concerned about. I say we throw it at the wall and hope for the best. But if you don't want to do it, then we don't do it.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask that you come prepared for any, uh, changes on Thursday to the resolution as well, if you want anything other than fifty percent to a direct administration, okay?
Well, there's a question that we should answer, and we should answer it today, in, in this council meeting at the whole. What is it that we want to go, do we want to go sixty percent on Miller Road? Do you want to leave it at fifty percent?
I, I think that fifty percent, Ms. Mayor, is, it's, it's our best foot forward, if we ask too much, it, it becomes less attractive in terms of the matrix of evaluations from the province of Manitoba, so, you know, if it's a fifty-fifty, I think we're asking our max, if we go beyond that, it's, it's almost like we're disqualifying ourselves from, uh, from consideration.
Well, then you're leaving the taxpayer with the other fifty percent, which is substantial.
I mean, the other alternatives, if we ask sixty percent, they don't fund it at all, and then we, the residents have lost out. With all that work that's been done on Miller Road.
Yeah, but who says that they would throw it out completely? They might come back and say, "You asked for sixty, we'll give you forty, we'll give you fifty."
I think we just, uh, take the acting CEO's suggestion, think about it, and then, uh, make a decision on Thursday.
Because this is, this is a big bill, Miller Road, much bigger than we anticipated.
Yeah. But I think that's, uh, this is asking for funding for a part of the Miller Road, doesn't mean we have to do all of it, I mean, from what I can see, we can change our minds if we want to do all of it, or not all of it, or a certain portion of it, or, I, I do agree with, uh.
Are you suggesting we do half a road?
Uh, I'm suggesting that we take a look at it and see what options we do have. If it's half a road, it's half a road, if it's first layer of gravel, first layer of gravel, it could be anything, right? It doesn't mean have to be half a road. And if there's any other priorities that we want to see on this, then we should think about which ones are important, then let's narrow it down on Thursday, when we do our resolution. So we'll go on to the next item, which is four point four four, which is the mural. Request work proposal. We'll go ahead, uh, Councilor Practican, oh, Shetty, sorry.
Um, I, I'm good with the, the, the ten, the bids that came in, but I was just like, a little bit more input onto what is going on there, not redesign the whole thing, just, I think some input from what, I live in the area that there's a lot of traffic through those trails, and see them, and just, just some input from what I've heard from people that are down there, "It'd be nice to see this, it'd be nice to see that", or a little more history, or more understanding what the mural's about.
So I can update.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I can update council on that, so I have spoken with the artist, and I have, uh, brought forward some comments and feedback that I had received from council. And, uh, the artist is very amenable to making some revisions to incorporate suggestions, so we're working on that, uh, using the feedback that I received from council. And he will have, um, a sort of a revised mock-up of, of what the potential project could be. And, uh, I will, I will circulate to council, and we'll just sort of get your, uh, we'll get consensus among you that we all like the design, before I go forward with the, the okay for the start of the project.
That's great, thank you.
Did you want to say what you talked him about, or what, what changes you were looking at, or did they agree upon?
Right, so for, for some information, uh, there's, there's a few, um, alterations that we, we spoke about. One was shifting, uh, the divider of the images a little to the right, increasing the size of the municipal office, removing the, uh, uh, female figure, and instead representing, uh, our, our current multicultural, uh, community that we have, as well, uh, the representation of the veterans, we would have the, the horse, um, cavalry facing the opposite direction. So those were the main aspects that we, um, we spoke about, uh, and then Mike was excited to, uh, input some of his en creativity to that. Uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, what, what he's going to come up with.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next is four point four five, which is Pepsi beverages. Which is, uh, or contract.
Yeah, so for, for some background, this is a very routine contract with us, we've been, uh, with, with Pepsi, uh, for over ten years. We've had really good service, and the municipality gets some revenue from the sale of those beverages.
This is a five-year contract?
Correct.
Uh, how does the vending machine work? Just maybe take us through that, because they're supplying us new vending machines?
Right, so we, we, they supply new vending machines, a, a contractor, uh, operates the inventory of those, and the municipality gets a quarterly check of twenty percent of those sales. Uh, additionally, we, we receive, uh, a check or credit that we use for, uh, purchasing a free product. The municipality traditionally uses that for water, uh, which is used, you know, in some events, we give away water, um, you'll see that, yes? Um, so that's, that's typically what we do, is we have, uh, water that we use that credit for. And again, we, we, uh, get the twenty percent from the total sales.
So when it says that the item's unchanged from previous contract, pricing will not change, so what pricing are they referring to?
The drinks, probably.
Well, but you've got to think that the machine's not the biggest thing here, it's, this is, you're talking the.
Consumable.
For the socials, where they have the dispensers, that kind of stuff, you've got the CO2, all the drink mixes, that's probably what we go through more, a lot more of that stuff than that you'd see the bottles and stuff in the vending machines, that kind of.
The product.
That's the product.
So do you know what, because this is a five-year contract, I, I'm having difficulty imagining I'm not changing any pricing over five years. So I'm thinking there must be some pricing that they're changing, but, so they're not very specific what it is, I, I don't know if you know what it is, or?
No, it's.
Do they control the price of the drink from the vending machine, or?
Yes, and, and the, so you'll see here, there's, there's no changes, right, that we've only updated in our analysis what is changing. Our two-liter pricing is, is set at, at twenty dollars ninety-four cents, or that's two dollars and sixty-one cents per unit for socials and events. Uh, there's, the pricing is, is not changing from the previous contract, and there's no charge for any of the equipment services or exchanges. And that's because we don't own the vending machines.
Okay, so this pricing is just this two-liter pricing and the, uh, or two, two sixty-one, that's the only pricing that's not changing?
It, that is, uh, and I apologize, I don't, I don't have the current contract in front of me. What we've, what we've updated, that what, is what the current price will be, and I apologize, I, I don't know the current price there, we didn't note it in the report.
And I guess, like, right now, I'm just going to use a figure, if Coke is three bucks a can in the vending machine, that's the price that will change, or is that price going to stay the same for the next five years, three bucks a can out of a vending machine?
As I understand it, it's, it's no change.
That's not going to change for five years?
That's, that's what I've.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Shetty.
And at the end of this, if there's any changes, I'm talking, oh, I'm talking. And at the end of this, if there's any changes, I'm talking, oh, I'm talking not the vending machine, I'm talking social-wise with corkage, stuff like that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's all pretty well awash anyway, because they're, whatever they're using, they're paying back through that, so.
Well, no, I understand that, but according to this, they're not changing any pricing, even though, like, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Well, maybe you, we should talk, we should talk to DeMar and ask her those questions. But what pricing's not going to change? Because we're going around in a circle here.
Yeah, this is, this is the report that DeMar had provided to us. She says there's no change, and I, I trust that she's reported that correctly.
And if, if we're satisfied with the previous contact, contract and the pricing hasn't changed, then what are we discussing?
And Coke never responded, so.
Well, no, I understand that, but I don't, you know, I guess I don't know what the previous pricing was. And now I see this pricing, which they say is not going to change, and then I think, is it, okay?
I, I can get a previous, for Thursday, I'll have the current price for those two liters for you.
And a pricing, that won't change. All, all the items, that won't change in pricing. That's what I'm, this is kind of vague for me.
This is executed with, with the recreation department, right? So they've negotiated this contract. So they must know what they're negotiating.
Yeah, but do we, council? Does council know?
Well, there's no cost to us, first of all.
Well, no, pricing hasn't gone up, but.
But why are we concerned about the pricing? There's no cost to us. The pricing is set for socials. We're getting a cut, we're getting a commission.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And we're getting the water, so why are we, why are we concerned when they're saying the pricing will not change?
Because they're not saying what pricing will change.
But what does it matter? It, it doesn't matter to you because there's no cost to you.
It's cost on the vending machine and it's cost to the residents, so.
Well, but there's no cost for the vending machine. This, it works like, you put the vending machine in, they make their money on the product that they're selling.
Yeah, I know.
You have a choice whether or not you buy that product.
I know. But that was a question I asked. Is the price at the vending machine going to change or not?
But that's not our concern. That's their concern.
But you know what?
What we're concerned about is how much the water costs us and how much we're, we're paying for our socials, the two-liter pricing.
So we're going to have our.
That's going to not change.
So we're going to have our acting CEO talk to DeMar and find out what's what.
I'll, I'll reach out and I'll, I'll get, I'll try to get that information for Thursday.
So now we go to 4.46, request for service reports. Questions, comments? Anyone? None? Okay.
No. Good to see the numbers and.
Yeah. So this was the monthly one that we had?
I've included both the month of August as well as year-to-date comparisons.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I saw here. So then we go to 4.47, which is year-to-date. I don't know if anyone has any questions? None? Okay.
Well, we know that we need to do work on our bylaws. I think that we all know that. And that'll be a priority for our new CEO.
Then now we go to, there's nothing at 4.5, nothing at 4.6, nothing at 4.7, 4.8, and nothing 5, external committee.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just bring up like 4.8 where it says transportation services. So through the winter season or through the snow season, could we not set a few meetings that the public works manager or the director of infrastructure is in at our meetings? So we can, you know, keep an ongoing tabs, not after, you know, everybody's riled up. Would we kind of keep that?
Yes.
Policy moving and adapting?
That's a good idea. Okay, then we go to 5, external committees. 5.1 is municipal relations. It's a letter dealing with grant that we have.
So I have a question for our acting CEO. Is this grant money stocking money? Can it stack?
We are able to stack this grant.
Okay, then we go to 5.2, economic development, investment trade, Manitoba job grants approval letter. I don't know if anyone wants to, does anything they need to talk about in here? Everything all right with it?
I, I have a question for our acting CEO.
Yes, go ahead, Council of Cliver.
Uh, so this is just something standard that you're doing all the time?
Yeah, we do this every year. Generally, they have two intake periods and we apply for whatever training we know is in the queue for staff. So this includes our fire department, our utility staff, public works, administration, recreation, all our departments. If it is known and scheduled costs that we know are coming and we will incur, we put it in for the grant and we get a percentage of funding. We've been fortunate enough to, to receive funding in the past and, and it's, it's a really good way to benefit our staff with education and keep the costs low for the municipality.
Great. Thank you.
So that's 5.2. Next is news, next, 6.1, the newsletter.
There's nothing under the newsletter.
No, so if, if council would like, I can, I can speak. We are working on our October newsletter. So just wanted to raise with council for your input, if you have any, any stories you'd like us to feature, if there are any residents in your ward or the community that you know have done something noteworthy or interesting that you think that would, might be interesting to include, please let us know. If there's anything that you'd like to feature, us to feature for council business, certainly give us that input. We have a number of things planned already, but just wanting council's input for that.
So does anyone have any ideas for input right now?
Can you tell us what topics you have planned so far?
In, in no particular order. These are ideas, so they might, depending on space, some may or may not come in this issue or a future issue. Certainly, our, our lead story will be welcoming our, our new CAO. We are also going to talk about our MPs' visit at our previous council committee of the whole in August. We are, are looking at doing a, a year in review for December is, is what we're, we're tentatively thinking. So we're going to be splitting some projects possibly in the October issue for things that we've accomplished, such as some of the paving projects. We've got some, some signage, some trail projects that we're doing. So we're just working out whether we're going to do that in, in one issue or if we're going to split that. We're, of course, going to talk about the tennis hub opening and that big event that we had. If, if we can, we might have an update on the mural. Again, that might go for a year in review. We might have an update on our parks. We did, we did not feature the Legend Parks improvements in our newsletters yet, and that is complete. So we'd like that as well. We know that Meadowlands Park is, is coming for installation. We do know that we are going to hopefully have a council picture at our new pedestrian bridge at Grassmere. Yeah, for operational things, we are going to have things like a yard waste reminder that we're wrapping up at the end of October. It's the last chance. We're hoping to have some acknowledgement of the, the students that received scholarships in the last school year. We are going to see if we can get the, the King's School, the Gateway Church, King's School are having a grant opening.
That's nice.
So we're looking to, to see if we can get some input from them.
Also, have we been invited to the grant?
I'll follow up. We also have, of course, the new fire, the pumper that is being delivered. So again, that's one that will possibly be a year in review item. We are going to reach out to our, our COP program and get some Halloween safety tips. We'll have input from our, our rec department, from our recreation director. And we'll also have a summary on, on taxes. You know, how many people came through our tax drive-through, how many people we see in that one week. Just give ourselves a bit of a pat on the back for a very busy tax season and our staff are remarkable for their service in that week. And then we're also going to highlight the upcoming second business expo, which is planned at the access center. So that was really well, well-received in the spring. And they planned for another, another event. And we are going to highlight that and, and bring more, more publicity to the event.
You've got more than you need.
There's, there's too much there. So we, those are our ideas. And then, of course, we, we see what else gets thrown in the mix in the meantime. But, but we have lots of good news to share and, and exciting things to share in the community.
When is the Gateway opening?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I believe the date is set. I'm not sure.
What it is.
What it is.
If I can just ask for the December one, because this one seems to have filled up really big. Maybe leave some room, because I'm sure, you know, council would like to season's greetings from, you know, kind of something from a little bit of all of us and leaving some room for us in there on the, on that one.
Like a little blurb?
Yeah.
Like the season's greeting blurb? Oh, could do that. That sounds good.
So now we're down to number seven, question period. Does anyone have any? By all means. How many people asking questions? Just two? Oh, just two? All three of you?
Why not?
Down under link 10.5, Toshack Road. I'm looking at the municipal economic development infrastructure program. There was quite a lot of discussion on that. We know from the very first couple of paragraphs what the funding is from Manitoba to all of the municipalities. Is there a ballpark figure of, this kind of a range that St. Paul might expect out of this? I don't think it's done on a per capita basis. I, I'm interested to know if such a range could be identified as to what might be possible. And then I'd like to draw council's attention to the first sentence on the second page of the report. And it says two categories are excluded from this. Number one exclusion is water and wastewater projects, and number two is recreation and culture projects. They're not going to entertain projects that use categories.
We saw that. That's why we didn't put anything with that.
Pardon me?
That we saw that. That's why we didn't put anything with sewer and water and recreation.
There was discussion of that.
Trails, it was a trail system. Yeah, I'm not arguing.
Okay. Just. And then I, I wish to make a comment or question about the community mural. Is the, the public space that is identified, it's called a public space, and if that is beneath the overpass, correct, beneath the overpass opposite the original phase one? So my question is. Council can include in capital budget estimates the amount of money required to acquire, construct, remove, or remove capital property. So is the area under the overpass capital property belonging to the RM? I think the overpass belongs to the province. How can we commit money to improve something that's not capital property? That's the question.
I don't think the province is going to take the province.
You're done? I don't want to interrupt. As you're fully aware, you know that's not the municipal property, because you were on this side of the table when we started doing underneath there.
I will.
So are we, I, I think we're trying to unite, bring communities together and for safer access. And we did go to the province for that safer pedestrian crossing rather than sending people over the bridges, over the bridge, over the perimeter highway. So I understand you have a problem with us spending it on this, but I would have more of a problem sending kids over the perimeter to cross since we're making trail systems to connect everywhere. So I don't really, I've never heard that concern, only, only from yourself. And I think this is still helping the community by joining it together.
Well, the concern about spending money on municipal assets basically was if you look in, let me look this into 2018, 2019 budget binder, it's clear in that budget binder that we weren't supposed to be spending money on anything that isn't a property of the RM, to replace, to create, to recruit.
So when we get, when we get complaints of road approaches to Main Street, which is MI property and we're paving streets and we continue right to the asphalt surface of MI's property, we still do it there for convenience and safety to the people who are sitting.
I'm thinking on this.
Well, it's still, it, non-municipal infrastructure, non-municipal infrastructure. It's the same thing. I'm just trying to use an example leading one to another. So it's, it's all in the safety of our residents. That's the way I look at it.
Well, time will tell. And that's it. Maybe on Thursday, it could be some ballpark figure and range for what the RM could expect in terms of grant allocations.
I don't think there was an expectation. It's whatever we can get. There's no number that they put in there. You've read it as much as we did. It's, you put your asks in and you get what they give you.
It seems to be that it's still, from what I read, it just seems to be still in the, in the works, because they haven't finalized all of the parameters, because they do talk about funding by, if I remember right, population. That's what they were going to look at, but I don't see it in this one, unless I was thinking of something else.
I, I believe you're thinking of the, the funding that we received supplemental to the basket funding, the 512,000.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That was per capita.
One additional comment, and just wants to, council was saying, the money for the mural came out of purification, not being able to do with safety. Thank you.
And just add to that, Mayor.
Just go ahead.
That was a point of contention in last council, was that we're painting a, we're painting a concrete structure that's not ours, and we're using taxpayers' money. And there was a few people upset about that. I know, sitting on the Trails Committee, they've indicated a lot of vandalism on that, on, on, under the overpass. And that has been reduced with the community mural that went up. I've, I've expressed my concern with spending this money, but council, I abide by council's decision here, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, please. Name, address?
Nora Albert, 312 Edmond Avenue. I have a question, comment concerning regarding one of the items in the last payment register, and there hasn't been a question period during your sit-down. It's regarding the payment for the Legends Playground equipment, and the payment was 73,955, so 74,000 dollars. My concern, and it's interesting, after listening to your discussion about policy versus procedure, if we look at the procurement guidelines, I believe it likely is meeting the policy. If we look at the procurement guidelines, I believe it likely is meeting the policy of the guideline of the procurement. But this item was in twenty twenty-two in the capital budget. And it's, and the estimate coming from staff was for twenty thousand dollars. That wasn't expended in twenty twenty-two. So it began a period and was approved by council in the twenty twenty-three capital budget for now the estimate was down slightly to nineteen thousand four hundred. But the actual payment made was seventy-four thousand, so almost fourfold. And the concern that I have is that if indeed it's meeting the policy where the tenders were done, then the approval is given. But once the item has been approved from the capital budget, you don't get input into that again. And so in the policy, the procurement policy, in an item between eight thousand and forty thousand, so the original number of nineteen or twenty thousand had fallen into that, they request the three quotes. The, the statement in the policy is funds are to be clearly identified in the municipality's financial plan and further over the delegation of approvals. And the, the C A O can approve up to a hundred thousand dollars if the expenditure is identified in the municipality's financial plan. So just as an example, I went through the capital budget from this year and I found twenty-two items ignoring services, just looking at goods that are, that fall under a hundred thousand dollars. And those twenty-two items added up to six hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars. But if any one of them could go up to a hundred thousand and it never comes back to you, what you think you're going to be paying out of our money is seven hundred thousand dollars, in fact, could go up to two point two million. That less than a, less than a million dollars is, was within a ten million dollar plus capital plan.
If I, if I could, that's a misinterpretation of the policy. The, the delegation of authority can only be used if the funds are expended and it can't be over budget. So if the budget is six thousand dollars and the project comes in at fifteen, it would require council approval.
Okay, so that makes the question easy for me tonight and I, and the answer, I would, I would please to hear. If you budgeted nineteen thousand four hundred, that was the estimate, why, why then did it cost seventy-four thousand dollars? Can you explain?
Not right now, but I can.
That's a good question.
Because I certainly wouldn't expect that an item will go, will increase fourfold in a manner, that just is a caveat.
Go ahead.
If I can just make a comment, I, I believe, without going back and looking, I believe that first estimated twenty thousand was for raising the property and getting the landscaping into there. Then there was on top adding a play structure. So I just want to make sure there's not two different scopes of work being, because I know the first one was just to bring the, that level, you know, the area. That was so low in there, I believe the first thing was bringing it up to grade where someone could even walk on it, so.
Well, the point of fact is if it's over budget, it would have been brought back to us.
Yeah, and there was multiple projects in there.
That's correct. As, as the councillor said, there was multiple projects and there was also multiple grants to offset those expenses.
So I just, as, I do recall looking at this. I just don't know the answer. I think when I did look at it, it may have totaled this, I don't know about the labeling, but it may have, what you see as a check total, you don't see the bill total. So there could be five capital projects included in this check. And that check could, each, each check could be worth twenty thousand dollars, which would bring five up to a hundred thousand dollars check.
It is specifically to the, to the vendor playgrounds or as, and states that it's the playground equipment?
Yeah, that's why I'll take, I'll take a look.
So if it's, if it's something like that, then it would be easier for everybody all around if it would state more clearly what is included. This one seems pretty specific.
Yeah, you're looking at, on the check, right, on the register, because it's only got just a line item, correct? Yes.
There's the vendor and the item.
Yes.
They seem pretty specific.
Yeah, and you know what? There was one I remember that was pretty specific and I thought maybe it wasn't the spec, how it was said wasn't actually what it was. And it's just the way that they labeled their, their checks or whatever, however. But we'll get back to you on it.
I would appreciate an answer to that, because, I mean, as a resident, for, for Legends as an example, we've paid upwards of two hundred thousand dollars on various things that are green space, playground, trails, all of that. And we, that really should be the developer, much the same as in other developments. Yes, we need them and we end up paying for them, but why is it not in the D A? The Trail Lights are an example. And the Whistler Hollow, green space, all of that.
Counselor.
Okay, I'm going to address that.
Counselor, go first.
So, so I don't know, I don't know if you know or not. So there was money that the developer did give for Legends. Three councils ago or four councils ago, was decided that it would go to Moore Road Park. So they did give money, but it was decided to go to Moore Road. And then that developer ended up walking away from that development, which I'm sure you do know as well. So the R M did have to take that development over for paving and finishing up the other items. So that's something obviously, they only did put, I don't sure the dollar amount that went to Moore Road, but they did put some sort of money at some point.
Yeah, and Mrs. Link, when she was the councillor, advocated for a park here. And so we, as council, had decided that even though the developer had walked away, that we as council would still put a park in there, because it, the, the residents deserve it and it's built out now. And that was a decision and input from the councillor at the time, which was Mrs. Link. And so we as council made that decision. And we also made a, a decision on Whistler Hollow. Same thing, count, the developer, well, there was, there was a little bit difference there. But we made a decision because Whistler, Whistler Hollow wanted a park and we had decided as council that areas, our areas need parks. And now going forward, when we have a developer develop, that's one of the things that's required when we do subdivisions. And you'll know that from River Springs, you know that from Trails, you know that from Park View Point. We're seeing the, the Park View Point Park is being utilized unbelievable. So of course, with every phase now, we as council going forward are going to ask for that. But, you know, we have to go back and make right. And that's what we did. We can check the prices for you and see what, why there was this anomaly or what, what happened here. But we as a councillor are committed to the community, to make sure the funds go to the community. That's, you know, expecting that and that deserves that. So that's what I got to say.
Thank you. And thank you, councillor, you said, for continuing to fight for Hollow Park.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Jerry Blinke, three by four, Garnet Drive. I guess I'm going to be going over something that's already discussed here, but I'll bring up that mural. I don't know, the last time the mural was painted, I brought it up and I asked about the cost of it. And at that time it was stated fifty thousand and was dealt to twenty thousand or whatever. But I don't see putting the money into provincial protection. The province has more money than it needs to allocate. If they want it decorated, it should decorate. There's a homeless camp setting up there now, there's tents there now. So I, I can't see spending the money there. I understand that the traffic goes there, but people are walking on everything. But I, I, I think there's a better place to put the money. I mean, we have residents that are asking for lights in front of post office boxes because it's dark and they're going in there to get their mail and you want the safety. And there's a great demand for streetlights, this municipality, and to put, spend that money, I don't know whatever it's going to end up being.
Excuse me, did you have a question on all of this?
Yeah, so why would money be put on, on somebody else's property, like we discussed here, instead of spending the money for the residents who are paying the taxes?
So that question has been answered, hasn't it, already? You know, there was a comment made that it was to prevent vandalism. It was more or less for the safety of the, it's an area that is used by the residents of the municipality and council approved with it, so that's what we counsel.
Well, I know we approved the last one, but I mean, we're talking about this one.
Well, not the same reason why.
This one is approved already?
For the mural?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It was, it was a carryover from previous council.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So it didn't get done on the previous council, it was carried over.
Okay, so.
And there was, and there was, and there was a big discussion about it at the budget.
Yeah, well, we have to live with that, that's what it is. Okay, and I'm just giving you my view, anyhow, it doesn't matter. And the upgrading of the roads in the industrial park, it's not just the roads. I mean, there's so much traffic. And when we have an accident on pipeline and the river, all that traffic has gone down through the industrial park. It's not only the cars and the trucks and the semi-traders and then the, and the, you know, we have Arctic trucks, heavyweight going through there. So I can understand why the people, I mean, I mean, the somebody who are putting water on the roads because the companies there on, on Ames Road, they could stop and work because it's so dusty. And there's a lot of truck traffic and it's not cars, it's truck traffic, like semis.
Excuse me, do you have a question on all of this, too?
Yeah, when will we fix the road?
Which, which road?
Been answered. City went pick roads, so why would we spend money on a road that's not, not the municipality's?
Well, then, why would Ames Road built up for that contract for when, when that subdivision went in between Ames Road and my property? Why, why was it in West St. Paul's?
Again, for the safety of West St. Paul. For the safety of West St. Paul.
Yeah, but as far as I know, that road was half and half, wasn't it? It was a, a, a.
I guess we can look into that for you to see, to see who paid what on those roads.
Okay, and then one other thing is, on the request for service reports, I looked at the map of, of the, and what I, I see that most of the requests were in the new areas. And my question is, what is being missing in development agreements or whatever that requires all that request for services in all those new areas? If you look at the map, it's all plotted down in the one, you know. I'm just wondering what, what's missing? I mean, to listen at the bottom there where you said, we do grass cutting, we do this, we do this. But what is the one main thing that we're missing in this area that, that's all in the new areas, right? I don't understand that. If you look at the map and then you see the old areas that, you know, houses are there for fifty, hundred years or whatever, the gardens and everything, there's no request for service or what?
Well, some of them, I can speak to some of them. I know that some of them are construction. So the construct, sometimes the construction goes up and people aren't cleaning up their garbage and it's drifting over into other people's yards. So people put a request for service in so that we deal with the contractor to clean up his garbage. That happens a lot in a lot of the new areas because construction is taking place.
Okay, so then they just leave their construction deposits?
No, we have to go and enforce it and say, clean it, clean it up, right?
Well, okay, is that the only reason?
No, I think another big reason, it's not what we're missing, it's what we have, is double the population in there. So you've got twice as many garbage cans, twice as many recycling cans. If you miss five percent of that whole area, you're going to get twice as many requests for services in. On you missed my garbage can, you missed my recycling.
I understand that. So what I'm saying is, when they're applying for things, they're telling us there's no impact.
I'm sorry, say that again?
No impact on us. And here we go. That's what, that's the point I'm bringing up, you see.
Well, you know, there's a variety of things that happen here, as you know.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the item is number eight, in camera. Okay, so we've come out of our in-camera session and now we're going to adjourn the meeting at nine oh eight P M. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.